Good evening. Hello. My name's Matt Wallace. I serve as Scottsville Town Administrator. And you're now viewing the meeting stream and recording for the regular business meeting of Scottsville Town Council on Tuesday, January 18th, 2022. The meeting moves to Tuesday from its usual Monday because of the Martin Luther King holiday. This meeting is being held in compliance with Virginia Open Meeting Laws, the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and the county of Scottsville ordinance on the continuity of local government during the COVID-19 emergency. The bulk of the council is meeting here in person at 401 Valley Street. Our meeting is open to the public. But we also allow council members to participate and vote online and by phone using this Zoom platform and call-in options. We also have the same mix of options available for public participation. And the public is very welcome to join us in our work. The meeting is open to the public at 401 Valley Street. There's also call-in and Zoom options. Tonight's meeting includes two public hearings duly advertised under the Virginia law. The local term here now is five minutes until seven o'clock. We're still assembling our form and getting set up for the evening. If you're viewing the meeting in the future, thank you so much. You can skip ahead five minutes on your recording and we'll come to order. For those on the screen, thank you very much. I'll mute and silence this line here right now while we get set up and we'll come to order in a few minutes. Thank you so much.
All right. So, seven o'clock. Let's call this meeting to order because we've got a lot of business to attend to this evening. I'm gonna ask the town clerk to call the roll, please.
The county of Scottsville. Zachary Bullock.
Yes.
Daniel Briscoe.
Here.
Meredith Brenner-Thompson.
Here.
Stuart Munson.
Here.
Eddie Payne.
Here.
Ross.
Good. Thank you. I'd ask you now to stand and let's pledge allegiance to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice our own. Thank you. They have your seats. Item number two on the agenda is a consent calendar, which includes the approval of the agenda, unanswered reports to December 2021, and the past meeting minutes for a number of various dates listed on your agenda sheet. Is there a motion to accept the consent calendar as presented? Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public forum session tonight. If there's anybody here that wishes to speak to anything besides Bird Street and Blenheim, you're welcome to take the podium now and speak. Otherwise, just we'll get to you when the public hearings are open. Okay, see, no one comes forward?
We got one.
I got one.
I just wanted to bring to attention the town council. And I don't know what the plan is. I think you guys would know better. It seems to me that we've had two snow events and we're gonna have a couple more. And our streets are really kind of messed up and the crossroads aren't clear and all that kind of good stuff. So I don't know what the plan of the town or how we're gonna handle it, but I know we've got more coming and I would sure hate to wait for someone to get hurt before we react to it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Matthew. Only a couple of things. Okay, Bill, go right ahead.
It's kind of related later on, but you know, that nature area, you know, I go out there almost every week and I don't know if anybody's been out there recently, but it's decimated. I mean, there's hundreds of trees down. You can't even find the Monakin Trail. So anyway, just to put it on the radar, there's gonna need some major work to do that. Because it's not just one or two trees. It's hundreds. And it's so it just looks like it really got killed. And it really never got repaired since last summer. But this, this is really bad. So I just, you know, I don't know how it's gonna do. You're gonna need some professionals because there's gonna be a lot of chainsaw work.
I know after the July thing last year, a lot of work was done to get debris out of the creek.
Right.
But evidently just ran out of time to now we'll get up.
It's really, I love that part, but it's just you can't even walk on some of the trails.
See if Vice Mayor Briscoe can organize a work party one day.
We need more than that, I think. We need a big grant.
Thank you, Bill. Only a couple of things. Okay.
Hey, sorry. I'm Kelly Perdelle. I just wanted to give, I put together a little bit of information. When Zach and I were considering moving here, we wanted a place that couldn't be, that wouldn't turn into Croze. And we determined that it's impossible for this area to turn into a Croze. And so I put together this little thing that you guys can look at. I won't go through the whole thing with time. I'll write it up as a narrative and post it on Facebook because I know a lot of people look at things there. It basically boils down to four important things. One being the river, two being the topography, three being the history, and four being the incorporation of the town and town council. That it is virtually impossible to develop at the rate and level even remotely close here as they did in Croze. Now, don't get it twisted. If Alamo County decides to develop Southern Alamo County the way they did Western Alamo County, there's nothing the town could do about that. But they would need to work through the largest historical district in the nation, one of the largest in the nation, the Southern Alamo Regional District. And we also, the county doesn't have the sort of people-moving infrastructure that they do in Western Alamo County with 64 into 50. And so I don't anticipate them building a highway, at least not in my lifetime. So I just wanted to give that general information because I know people are afraid of this area ever turning into Croze. And I just wanted to hopefully maybe rest assured some votes that it's impossible. So I wanted to.
Okay, thanks so much. Anybody else? All right. Since our work session last Tuesday, only I have three things to add to the report I gave at that meeting. Last Wednesday, I sat in on the Board of Supervisors meeting, which they were given the presentation by CenturyLink and had the opportunity to speak before the Board of Supervisors regarding my experiences with CenturyLink, the gist of which is that the word service is not in their vocabulary. So I said my piece to them, and that was that. I was able to attend all three sessions of the weekend program that Matt put together on the items we're going to discuss later tonight. And I want to commend him for getting that put together and want to thank all those that participated in it. We gathered a lot of good information and we'll get into that further in a little bit. And the third issue is the, is it called the Patriot Front? It's a sort of a right-wing extremist group that's been plastering little decals around town on town property. When Zach told me about that at the work session, I advised him to call Chief Jenkins, who has done some investigating and talked to different businesses that have video cameras, systems, surveillance cameras. And so he is aware of the situation. And what I discussed with Chief Jenkins is this. If you see somebody putting one of these stickers on property that's not theirs, just get a good description of the person, but do not approach them. Some of these people are extremists and just looking for a fight. And then report it to Chief Jenkins with all the information you have. But do not approach anybody you see putting one of these right-wing stickers on one of our lamp posts or any other town property. Mr. Vice Mayor, you have anything?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I would second what you said before just about us keeping aware of anything that, you know, is offensive to other people. And we want to make sure that we're working as well as we can. And also, I thought it was a good comment that the gentleman made before, just that we do the best we can as we all work together to deal with the snow.
Okay. Thank you so much. Item five on our agenda is reports from committees. Vice Mayor Briscoe, did you get a chance to attend the planning commission this, you were out of town, right?
I was. Well, I, I got back to no power and inability, but I, our town administrator has an update.
Okay, Mr. Wallace.
Thank you, Matt. Yes, Planning Commission was able to hold their regular meeting on January 4th, moving a day because of the holiday. That meeting was in hybrid format with everyone attending at home. That works well in the weather. Planning Commission reported out two recommendations, both unanimous, which are on your agenda this evening. Those are for two small special use permits. One related to tourist lodgings at 360 East Main Street, a historic tavern converting one apartment to a transient rental. And the other is the legalization of the mountain foreman uses at 1075 Valley Street, Lockman's Restaurant. No desire to change the uses there, which are well loved, but the property under new ownership and cleaning up that old zone will be helpful to them. There were no public comments at those planning permission public hearings and no conditions recommended. Planning Commission reports both were safe.
Any questions for Planning Commission? ARB, Mr. Bullock.
Yeah, due to weather conditions, we were unable to convene for our monthly meeting in January. But we are moving forward currently with our inventory. That got slightly delayed, but we will have full reports on conditions of properties in the historic overlay district discussed at our February meeting. We've also completed our round of outreach. I received my letter living in the historic overlay district that I have a historic home. And why that's important? Because it's what gives our town a lot of character. And then if you're interested in doing work, contact the ARB. So I know about it. And everyone who lives in town knows about it too. And I think Matt is also planning letters to realtors and contractors as well, because sometimes they get jobs or deal with property listings, and the property owners need to know that they're in a historic overlay district. So that's underway. The other thing that we're looking for right now, we're still short a member of our board. There are five members. We have four of the five, three out of the five need to be town residents, and we currently do not have a town resident. So we need to actively recruit one. So we get one soon. So we are fully constituted. So if you are interested in serving on the ARB, which is certainly interested in having the five. But if you know anyone who lives in the town limits, who would be interested, that would be great, especially someone who lives in the historic overlay district itself. Thank you.
Good. Any questions for Mr. Bullock? Mr. Payne, anything from Government Services?
We have met and will meet as needed. Mr. Loeb. If there's any reason for us to have a meeting. In a small.
At the next opportunity in February, some focus work on budget will be very helpful. We'll be formulating that budget and bringing it to town council soon. So help from the committee on that would be much appreciated.
And you'll notify everyone.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Payne. Mr. Munson, anything on economic development or?
Yes, we are moving forward with the Small Business Development Program. We have been advertising its beginning in March and gathering people who are interested. And over the next month or so, a team of folks, including myself and Matt, and other folks will be calling you to those people of interest and hoping they know exactly what's involved. They will have to come up with a hundred dollar application fee. And we want to make sure that we know that what we're gonna get out of it, what the rules of the contest are, or receiving a hundred thousand dollar grant, starting business. And that is intended and planned to start in mid-March. So we are, we've got the agenda, we've got the curriculum all put together. And we're ready to do each other's people and make sure they're interested in.
Any questions for Mr. Munson?
Yeah.
The signs, anything on events going on?
So right now, the plan for the calendar year is being laid out. Heavily focused on Beto Pollinator Festival, Fourth of July, just going through all the files, getting all of the contact information for portage ons and, you know, all that, all that bunch of stuff. But we'll have more for you next meeting after our first official meeting.
Good. Thank you so much. Any questions for the sign? Okay. Councilman, does it, do you have a committee yet?
I do not.
Okay, we're gonna have to work on that, right? All right, we will get into, we will get into that a little bit later on in the month and have you a committee by the first of February. Okay. Item six is our first of two public hearings this evening. This is the one for the Bird Street property. I think most everybody here has been to most of the meetings and over the weekend, I think everybody was in the room, was able to attend the event downstairs and really appreciate your participation. And there was a lot of good questions asked, a lot of good answers given, a lot of good information generated. So at this point, I will open that public hearing. And the rules are step forward, state your name, and try to keep it about three minutes or so. We don't want to be here all night. So feel free, first one wants to come up, get started.
If I may, we're gonna start with the, with the list of the signing sheet.
Okay.
People on the signing sheet, if people want to speak who haven't been able to sign up on this after that, then we'll also get to the Zoom.
All right, we'll let you call next.
Kim and Tim.
I did not know. I was signing with her. I'm Kim Schmidt. We live in the Scottsville area. We moved in 1995. We moved from Florida. And we moved, one of the reasons, to get away from development. And we had a realtor and we looked for a couple of years before we found our floor. And I asked him, where is it least likely to grow? Because we live in Florida, we have no protection. All it takes for development is money and land and someone willing to change the zone. I do believe it's that, but yeah. So we found this wonderful place. This, this is being proposed. One of the things that was brought up at the Saturday meeting, which I would have liked to have seen, was, so this was the thing we got with, with the drawings of all the houses. And of course, each house is four people and two cars, even when we had. There wasn't a sketch for the, what's it called, by rights. It's the 13 that is the minimum by law, what I understand. And it would have been nice to have seen that sketch and what that would have looked like. Because I think that is a compromise that everybody lives. People that would want to see it in development, people that want to see it controlled. I think that is a good compromise. And it would have been nice to have seen how that would have looked.
Thank you so much.
I understand, Mr. Schmidt. Pretty good speaker. But only real strong feeling on this is it would be best if we had a comprehensive plan of a whole project. Instead of, oh, we're gonna take 14 acres and put 48 homes on it. I think you're gonna end up with a kind of a mishmash, uncoordinated mess. Whereas if you say, before we're gonna grant any special use permit, we want to see a comprehensive plan of how this is going to be developed. For example, it's my understanding that if you do a development of 50 units or more, you must have two entrances, you know, entrance and exit. So that's why I am assuming that they chose 48, so they can avoid that. Well, what about the parcel next to that? Is that gonna be another, they say, oh, the impact of 48 homes is not that great. But what about the next parcel next to it? Are they gonna ask for another 48 units? And on and on. If we have a comprehensive plan, then you can plan on how many units are gonna be in there? What are gonna be the demands on the septic and, and water? What are gonna be the traffic considerations that need to be addressed? If we know a good idea of what the total, total project is going to be. And definitely against development. If you want something small, I think it might be wise to go tiny bit over the minimum that is allowed by rights. Because currently, if they're allowed by rights, they can put anything in there that they want. Whereas if you say, okay, you're allowed 13 by rights, we'll let you have 15. But then with a special use permit, then you can put restrictions on house size and architectural effects. Anyway, that's what I'm saying.
A group, as all of you all know, group of concerned citizens distributed a petition about the plans of this development being built on Bird Street and on Blenheim Road. This petition advocates responsible development. This petition and the attendance at the community meetings this past Saturday shows that people are very concerned. On November 1st, I presented this petition to the Planning Commission. I mentioned it to Matt after the first committee meeting, community meeting, and I thought it was interesting that the meetings that I've been to, nothing has been even mentioned about the petition and the fact that there are people that are concerned. He said that he did not have them. So I decided that they should be presented again. For some reason, they must not have been entered into the public record the first time. So I'm requesting now that they be entered into the public record. There are a total of 299 signatures from the paper and online petition. There are a few, I'm guessing, under 20 that were double signers, but that could mean that they weren't really sure whether the two petitions were connected. But they felt strongly enough about it to sign the bill. Some people from out-of-state addresses have stated that they are moving to the area. Some of them I know are moving to the area or have property in the area. Others are unknown, but there are a few, but they're really a minor number. This petition shows that there are many people who want development. And that's what the petition said. We want development. But we want responsible growth commensurate with the size of our town. We want the growth to be community-driven, not developer and land owner-driven. Thank you again for the community meetings on Sunday, on Saturday, because it was obvious. It was very informative for many.
I'd just say, I did this today. Just getting to the point there. And thank, thank you for being there Saturday. All of us.
First off, I too would like to thank Chris and Matt and the town for having that community meeting. I think it was, it was really informative on Saturday. And it clarified a lot of issues. But it also brought up many new ones. There's still a lot of unanswered questions, especially about conditions for a special use development. And there are too many for me to address now, but there's a lot of them that I think the town, you know, would have to really study and really get some guidance from professional development planners and developers. The town has never done a development. And, you know, this is all new. And I think you need some guidance. And there are some developers, I'm sure, at Alamo and where else that you could get some guidance on how to do this right. But anyway, I have been following this, this entire plan for years and the issues for years, even, even when it was in operation, which was pretty rough back then. So bringing that back is, is a real concern of us. I was on the planning commission and involved in some spot zoning attempts at the small development on Bird Street. I was also involved with both developing the comprehensive plan and the small area plan for Bird Street. At the last public hearing for the Planning Commission in June, the Planning Commission actually listened to the public and denied the rezoning to Village Residential. So they denied it. They were against that. And the vast majority of people requested smaller development. They, they want us to develop, but they want it small. But after that, a proposal was put forth of 48 houses on Bird Street, 24 on Blenheim. And many people, as senior Revenant, signed a petition opposing high-density development, which would, in, in, in the area I live in, would go from 20 houses to 68 houses in that part of town, which to me is, is extreme. which to me is, is extreme. Now, we're, we're six months later, really nothing has changed since June meeting to justify such developments. And it seems most still want for support, creating small sensible sized neighborhoods that fit into our town, not urban ones like those on Avon Extended and with triplexes and quadruplexes packed together. While I was on the planning commission, we revised the comprehensive plan and we encouraged transformation of the, of the tire plant, which I think most people would like to see. But we did not support transformation of the town itself. I'll end with this, the vision of the comprehensive plan is our roadmap. And, and the vision is this, Scottsville should preserve its small town character, be guided by thoughtful and harmonious development, which will promote the well-being of its residents and maintain quality of life for all. These developments, these high density developments and proposals do not adhere to that small town character, harmonious development, or promote quality of life. As one, one of you, one council wisely said a few months ago, it resonates with me. They don't, they don't make towns like this anymore. So I urge you to only approve by right number of houses and that not transform our town, but preserve, preserve our unique town.
That's good. Not the best with masks, I apologize for this. We're not here talking about development. The owner of this property owns three properties, which is eighty percent of all developed property in Scottsville. He's had the right to develop those properties for over two decades. And he's chosen not to do that. In a sense, he's prevented Scottsville from growing. He has the right to build seventy four homes between those three properties. That would be a twenty five percent increase in homes, which just has been denied. So to me, well, I'm sorry, I'm jumping around. But I'm just gonna, sorry. Having been involved with this for the last six months and these proposals and the six months before that, working on updating the small area plan, not once have I seen the owner of these properties attend any of the meetings. I find that to be interesting. He's constantly absent. The town staff, the town leadership, the town volunteers have invested countless hours into these projects, but where is the applicant? What's funny tonight is a request to go beyond his by right number of seventy four homes on his three properties and create new communities in our town with high density development. Note, if over the years, if we built those seventy four houses, you had it by right, that would increase it by twenty five percent. Would also leave them over a hundred fifty acres still to work with on those three properties. There's been an argument presented by staff that the town is dying. I'm not really buying that. The owner can't afford, the other argument is the owner can't afford to build by right density and needs higher density to make money and I really buy that either. That the large parcels don't sell, I can tell you that's not true. And the worst, that the impact of the town and its people is negligible. I really don't want to say what I think about that. The town had a community meeting this weekend, which I'm grateful for and thankful for. Now, I, I know that I'm seeing it through my eyes, so I'll try to stick to the facts. The meeting attracted twenty two people on the first meeting, eleven on the second and twenty on the last. Now, I don't know how many Zoomers there were. But to make a point, that's not at all trying to threaten anyone here in the, the town council. That's more than the people that came to vote the last time everyone was voted in. I was told by people that that wasn't that many. But if that's what it takes to vote everyone in and we have more at this meeting, it is substantial. Cindy didn't point it out, but that her, whatever, what's it called? Petitions, thank you. She could absolutely identify on written ones, eighty people from the town that sit down. That's more than double the people that came out to vote. That's a lot of people, even if you want to ignore the people from outside of town, it's still a pretty heavy number. I don't think it should be ignored.
Thank you.
I just want to say a couple of things. Once again, appreciate the fact that we had a town meeting and stuff. I mean, you know, the, the thing that we all need to realize is when we come up with things that the town has been working on and working on behind the scenes and, and within the scenes, it, it's, it's difficult. And this is one of, probably in my opinion, probably the most difficult decision that potential town council has been faced with for many years. This is something that can technically make or break the next part of Scottsville's history. And I think that from some standpoint, we've come a long ways. I, I advocated, quite frankly, I advocated that to have a old west town in Scottsville in the nineties. I thought if you blew tumbleweed down, it would be great, because it was what we saw in the streets. There were no stores. We've come a long ways from the mid nineties to where we are right now. The idea of some of the arguments that came up as far as growth, Scottsville is thriving right now, not from residents, but what it is organically within. What I want to see is an organic development. I am not opposing it, but what needs to happen is more oversight. I brought up the fact that we're talking about a unit density. These units can be technically anything and, and somebody brought up the manufactured home. It could be anywhere from that to a larger one. That's not brought up to say that that's what it's gonna be. What it's brought up to say is you don't know enough inch, you don't know enough information and it's the unintended consequences that you have to be careful about. You know, Mayor Thacker, you know, I asked Mayor Thacker years ago, why in the world do we have a levy? And he said, he said, I did it for the people that didn't know why we needed a levy, okay? He did it for everybody that's here that has property. He did it because he cared and he fought for it before he cared. I don't want to see us come into something just for the interest of having some homes that's not well thought out. And I am urging you not to approve this until more thought is done.
Y'all, please forgive me. I've been experiencing some migraines, so if I start having any kind of speaking issues, I'm sorry in advance. I thought about getting up and, and giving kind of a, a larger talk, but I'm here more to speak on behalf of numerous voices, including my own. And what I realized is that a lot of what we are asking for already exists in the town documents. In the West Area Plan, it says impacts redevelopment on the town's infrastructure, traffic and potential for increased flooding and climate change environments represents a threat that must be carefully considered. A levy built in the eighties circles the factory itself, it's privately owned and maintained and is not inspected by the Corps of Engineers. Two critical next steps are the owner's responsibility of floodplain analysis and map amendment and a phase two environmental site assessment. I bring that up because the town is, is working a lot to try to make this happen and a lot of people truly agree the development needs to happen. But in a negotiation, something else needs to come back to the town. The town has already got grant money for these assessments. We need to see what these assessments bring forward before we're put into a place where an agreement is made that we can't stand by, where detrimental harm could come to new citizens and old. I also bring up the comprehensive plan, ensure that sufficient resources and infrastructure exist to accommodate such growth and development before it occurs. Require that roads, sewer, water and other public utility utilities have sufficient capacity as a condition for development. That is something that we have heard over and over and over again, is the major concern with regards to infrastructure. That goes for roads, traffic, internet. I don't know about you all, how many people are still without internet after the last snow, snowstorm? So all of those things really play into account and I, I urge, as many others here, this is not a request to say no, it is a request to say not now. Not until we have more information, not until we're better prepared. Perhaps even using the West Area Plan's idea of a planned unit development, which does provide more ability for the town council to control some of those unknowns that people brought up at the, the meetings. And lastly, I did want to say thank you so much for holding those meetings. They were informative. A lot of people felt that they had questions answered that they have been wondering about for quite some time. They felt heard. And truthfully, that's one way that you can stop apathy in a town. And if you have apathy, that's when a town dies. And what we saw on Saturday is that people cared. It doesn't matter if they agreed with the developments, disagreed with the developments, what we saw is that the community cares enough to show up. And that truly means that the community is gonna have strength enough to grow. Thanks.
And people online to speak?
Kelly Croze, five twenty East Main Street. I just wanted to say that once we determined this town could never become Croze. The reason we wanted to move here is because we wanted to live in higher density. Scottsville, the town, is already higher density. These folks don't like higher density. That's why they don't live in downtown Scottsville. If people are going to buy houses here, if people, the people who do own houses here, they're, they have to at least be bought in to higher density, because that's what's already here. So if we bring in, if people want low density, they can literally go to anywhere else, because there's low density all around. Like Ms. Redd said, you can buy, you could sell big lots. But there's already high density here and we have an opportunity to create an authentic, attractive, additional, high density in area. Now, are the two houses on Bird Street on that block, are they a higher, a, a larger lot? Yes, because when they were built, including during the Antebellum South, that wasn't even town. That's why it's not in the historical overlay district. So yes, will that, will it not go with those two houses? Sure, but it will go with all of the other houses, including East Main Street where I live and Harrison Street, the, the two major places to live in downtown Scottsville. We need people walking to our businesses, because our businesses are our main revenue stream. And if that revenue stream doesn't stay consistent, then, and it has been mentioned already, the town will be forced to levy a property tax on those people who live in the town of Scottsville, which won't affect a lot of these people, but will affect me and will affect you. And so you, these people mentioned, clear the streets, they mentioned, clear the park. Well, how are you gonna do that if we don't have any money? We already don't have enough money. Because there aren't enough people coming into our businesses paying, remember the meals tax? I mean, if you are gonna put in a property tax, you think these people are upset? You want Stephen Meeks in here? There's gonna be people who are gonna be asking you, what have you done to make this town more attractive? What have you done to bring people here? What have you done to support our businesses here? And if you don't pass some of these things, what will you tell them? You will have nothing to say. Now, it doesn't, now, it's very possible that if you pass the special use permit, you still will have to eventually pass a property tax, because who even knows if they'll get sold? But at least then you can say to people, we tried. We tried to facilitate movement on property in downtown Scottsville. So what I'm asking, and if you lose, because if we lose money, we lose the most powerful defense we have against becoming Croze, which is our incorporation and our town council. Then we get absorbed back into the county and we become whatever Almaral wants us to be, which could very well be nothing, because it's so hard to develop down here. I don't want to see this town as a throughway town. I don't want to see it as anything other than what it is, a higher density, low population, small town. It is nothing like Croze.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? I'll, we'll purge those at Zoom, on Zoom.
Mr. Thomas Sansworth, two seventy five Bird Street.
Thank you very much. I've timed this a couple of times and, and I can't get it under three, so if it's all right, I'll borrow a minute. I have less to say about Blenheim later in the meeting. But good evening. My name is Thomas Sansworth. I live at two seventy five Bird Street, directly in the path of this development. And, and I cannot stress how excited I am to see it happen. The historic downtown area is already a dense settlement that encourages people to get out and walk, to enjoy local amenities like the library, parks, farmers market and the many businesses we have. Building new housing in this part of town is the perfect way to allow Scottsville to grow without putting an undue stress on the parking and traffic situations downtown. Will allow our new neighbors to get out and experience the same river town lifestyle that those of us who are already downtown get to enjoy. What's more, this plan responds to an identified need in the town planning docs, which itself came as a result of years of planning, multiple pieces of legislation being passed between town council and planning commission, consultation with VDOT and the Ryvanna Water and Sewer Authority about impacts on their infrastructure, both of which were shown to be negligible, and effective compromise to limit the density of development to something that matches the surrounding area at four units per acre. Matt, I sent you a picture in your email, if you have time to screen share it. Just for comparison here, the adjacent neighborhood between Page Street and Valley Street that Matt has a map of, from West Main Street up to Warren Street. If you exclude the one house that sits alone on one acre, this area has a similar density of forty eight addressed units on approximately twelve acres, some of those being multiple unit apartments, others being businesses or churches to drive extra traffic. I would argue that this proposal is already a good representation of smart, responsible growth commensurate with the size of the town, driven by input from the community. The other on, on Blenheim falls far short of that mark. This proposal on Bird Street is one that plays by the rules that this group established in previous zoning changes. Those changes were informed by extensive input from community members, developers, engineers, real estate agents and other stakeholders. There were discussions during that process where we heard from parties who pushed the town to allow a higher density in the cluster ordinance, pointing to walkable neighborhoods such as the original construction of Belmont or the more recent subdivisions in Croze, where eight to twelve units per acre creates what's considered a neighborhood feel. The planning commission and town council wisely pushed back on that and just months ago, this body passed the changes to the village residential zoning ordinance, defining a new cluster provision that would permit development of four units per acre, again in keeping with the existing density in the area. This proposal on Bird Street puts forth a number of houses at forty eight that has been shown to strike an appropriate balance between density and affordability in the community. Whittling that down at this point in the process or adding unnecessary conditions will do nothing other than make the remaining development less affordable and undermine your credibility, reducing the likelihood that future developers will want to jointly make plans with the town. That's not a smart way to grow Scottsville. This is the time to look carefully at the proposal, which plays by the rules you just said, and ask what more can we do for the future of Scottsville? You've already had good discussions about conditions around public lands, sidewalks, landscaping and more. Personally, I would question the dog leg cul-de-sac. It's not a street pattern that exists in Scottsville. It has a distinctly more modern and suburban feel and the existing grid layout has many more benefits for accessibility, walkability and traffic control. I would urge you to defer your vote tonight. Ask for a further consultation with your outstanding legal counsel and staff and collect a final list of appropriate conditions. Ask for a better design with specific changes around the street layout. But please do not litigate decisions in the plan that were already made in good faith. Do not throw away years of hard work by your staff and volunteer committees. It will ruin your ability to recruit for those much needed positions in the future. Do not throw away the significant amounts of taxpayer money that you've already put into researching the recommendations that are coming from your staff. That's not a good way to show that you care about the future of this community. Please do not make this group your neighborhood less affordable for our community. Take the time to get this right and do it for the future of Scottsville. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dunsworth.
May I speak at some point?
Susan, there's a sign up in the chat and Johnny muted.
But I'm, I'm sorry, I'm muted. I was just saying, Susan, please go ahead and I'll speak after you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize there was something.
That's okay. That's fine. That's okay. That's fine.
Thank you. Um, you all heard some very good reasons and I, and I respect Thomas's well thought out reasons, particularly since he lives very close to the area. Uh, but I would suggest that the applicant has offered, this is a special use permit. The applicant has offered no meaningful mitigation measures to justify a fourfold increase in the density of Bird Street and a threefold in, in increase in density at Blenheim Heights um above the allowable by right density. Uh, the very, secondly, the very real concern for hazardous environmental conditions on the entire factory site remains unaddressed. To defer a phase two environmental site assessment to, for even twelve acres of that site until the developer seeks funding from the bank uh seems to me would surely be a shirking of town's uh responsibility to uh to future, for the health, safety, and welfare of future homeowners. Um, undeniably, the landowner has ample resources to complete such an ESA and it has been recommended in earlier planning documents such as the nineteen, twenty nineteen Walker shot development. So the fact that one needed to be done has been well known for over three years. Um, and the fact, uh, as you know, uh, the town is prepared to compensate the Virginia Land Company to do these very things uh to complete such an ESA um in the form of the eighty thousand grant from the Virginia Outdoors Foundation for a public access easement on the fourteen acres of wetlands and the recent state funding to realign the floodplain boundaries of the tire factory site, which as Sarah pointed out, as in the small area plan says, is an obligation clearly stated to be the responsibility of the landowner. Uh, secondly, the, and with the uh impact of potentially replicating this proposed development on other parts of parts of the thirty acre Bird Street site um and the forty acre sites or more acres of Blenheim raises a specter of an exponential traffic impact. The provision, one of the conditions that was offered, but the provision to provide seven hundred feet of sidewalk and quote, a project plan for extending sidewalk to the library at some future date uh thereby places a burden on the town staff to run after grant funding. Uh, this is a less than adequate address to address the goals of a walkable community uh specified again in the West Downtown Area Plan. I strongly recommend that you, members of the town council, deny both the special use permits, thereby allowing the property owner to either develop or sell at significantly uh increased value the land with by right density or come back with a reasonable proposal that addresses the community's concern. Thereafter, the planning commission and town council should immediately proceed to adopt a PUD ordinance, planned unit development ordinance, which allows the town to negotiate for a full ESA two and a conceptual development plan on the, that addresses the entire site. Three fourths coming upstate to the town comprehensive plan should include strong language that both the tire factory and Blenheim should be planned for.
Ah, Susan.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Dunsworth, thank you.
Sure. Um, good evening. Uh, I'm a Scottsville resident. I'm probably best known here as the father of Tom, who until very recently was your town clerk. At work, I'm the dean of libraries at the University of Virginia, where we're doing a major building renovation right now. And that project has taken twenty years to get to the point of execution. I'll come back to that experience in a minute. Uh, my wife and I moved to Scottsville as renters five years ago because my son and his family lived here. After renting, uh, last year, we bought the house at two eighty Bird Street and we intend to spend the rest of our lives here in the historic district on Bird Street. I think the growth that's proposed here is not excessive. Uh, I believe it would support positive increases in small business opportunity in the tax base for the town. Sidewalks, for example, could be an, an outcome of that. Uh, that's come up here just recently. But there's a lot more than that that could be done to develop this further as a destination for day visitors and that will require investment from the town. Uh, it seems to me uh the property available for Scottsville's growth is limited, much of its owned by one person. In my university experience, the biggest challenge in capital projects is to get something actually started. It takes a great deal of preparation to create the conditions in which growth can actually happen. Uh, and I believe Scottsville's arrived at that point after a long time and a lot of work by a lot of people. Um, villages can be dense in parts and still remain small. Europe is covered with these places, as is New England where I grew up. Um, I think the last thing I'll say is the, the clearly the most important civic project in Scottsville's history so far has been the levee meant to keep the river out. I think the most important next projects will be ones that let a few more people in. And I don't think the development that's proposed here is uh, is an excessive concentration, uh, especially in a part of town that's already dense of comparable density, in fact. Uh, and plus one to uh the more informed and informative things my son said earlier. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunsworth. That's all. No one else on Zoom wishes to speak towards this? Okay, uh, I will. Nobody else? Close the public hearing. And tell you what I've been thinking about. I thought this uh meeting we had Saturday was really great. Got a lot of people out, a lot of people talking, and as several of you said, got a lot of questions asked and a lot of answers provided. But it was a lot of information. Um, the planning commission has done a lot and appreciate all that they have done. They have sent their recommendations to council. And technically, we could vote on this right now. But with all that information that came out of this weekend's meeting, I feel like the town counselors need to have a special session to discuss all that information before they make a vote. So what I'm proposing is that if one of the town counselors will make a motion to defer this vote until the February meeting, and we will have a, set a date for a special meeting of town council. All of you, if you'll leave your contact information with the town office, a call and give it to Matt at some point over the next couple of weeks. First part of February, we'll have a, it'd be like a work session, but only the subject we're going to discuss is Blenheim Road and Bird Street. But the public is invited. Okay? So that, that is my thoughts on the issue right now. A motion to defer the vote until our February twenty-second meeting. Councilman Hines has um made a motion to defer the vote on the Bird Street matter until February twenty-second council meeting with a work session voted strictly to this sometime prior to that vote.
Is there just Bird or word?
Well, we're gonna, I'm gonna say the same thing for Blenheim, but right now we're just talking about Bird. I'll second. They moved the seconded. Is there any discussion on that?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
Um, first of all, I just want to say thank you to everybody who shared what you shared, not only now, but over the last number of months. I want to also thank Matt for setting up the event that he set up this weekend. I thought it was really helpful, the information that was presented. And I also think the opportunity that we have is a town. I, Mr. Unsworth, I really appreciate what you said. In fact, that might be my new message to say, keep the water out, let the people in. I like that. Um, but, but to put it in simple terms, I think what the mayor said really is a good idea. We have a lot of things to consider. These are serious um considerations. And I also go back to the younger Mr. Unsworth and say, I think your suggestion of us really looking at these and coming with the right conditions as we would have a chance to do. So I, I really appreciate it. Again, everybody who expressed their opinions, I think is really helpful. But the idea of us as a council really now being able to kind of put the best plan forward, I think is really a smart idea.
I, and not mentioning the fact that we have two fairly new council people that haven't been through this before. And uh, so that would give them an opportunity to really study the matter more closely than having just been on the council for a few weeks, now having to vote on something as important as this.
Man, I had a couple of comments.
Yes, sir.
There, and I think, I think it's a good idea uh for us to do that as well, for the same reasons. Um, one thing I want us to keep in mind though is, is to look over the conditions that are on the special use permit. We have one in front of us and Matt has updated them, including with feedback from the community, which includes conditions related to mixed facades. Guarantee mixed facades, guaranteeing deep front fortress, all of which are in keeping for the diversity of housing in this area. And I would say, I mean, I, I'm on the ARB, so I guess I'm partial to the historic buildings around here, but the H R D is also a limited part of our town. And one of the things that makes the historic character of this town so interesting is that it's a mix of architecture from seventeen forty-four through the nineteen nineties. And so my home was built in thirty-three. At thirty-three, it didn't look very funky. Now it looks funky. And that's part of what makes our historic district interesting. And so I don't want us to be afraid of new builds. Um, and so I think a mix of facade is good. So in, in any of this, the conditions are here. Uh, Mr. Eisen brought up single family homes, so concerns about duplexes and triplexes. I agree. I'm concerned about affordability. We know that affordability is going to go up, meaning prices will come down if more homes are in there, more units are in there. Um, and there are ways we can do that. So we've got a couple of them. I'm, I support all single family homes and their detached. I can go with that. But balancing that with affordability, a couple of options. We might have to have some duplexes to make it affordable. Or another condition, which is, which was recommended and that is in an email or received from Matt, would be to increase or um add a condition that a certain number have to be affordable to people who's, who earn sixty percent of the regional median income. And so I think we already have a lot of conditions that don't require much more research. I actually think they're right in front of us and they came from the community. And I think they're already in here and ready to address some of these concerns. Um, and I'll say, and I also want to just reiterate that the, you know, professional guidance we've received on this. And I think we've really done our due diligence and we've received information from VDOT, outside experts this weekend. Roads are not going to be overburdened by fifty-four homes between these two locations. Water, we are well under capacity. We know that. Infrastructure, the developer is going to build them. Town's not responsible for internet, by the way. However, you're sent to, if you're, set with Centrally, I have another recommendation for you, which I could share after the meeting. Cause I got off that way. So, oh, and the environmental study, that's a contingency of the law. They can't build without an environmental study. We know that. We've been told these things multiple times. So the conditions here are, are right and ready for moving forward. And I know people are talking about the forty-eight homes at, on Bird Street. We're not actually talking about forty-eight homes. Planning Commission recommended thirty-six over those, well, nine acres with thirty percent green space. One of the things I'm also interested in is that, because that keeps coming up in this conversation, is it historically appropriate or appropriate in the character of the town? Currently, so the Birch or the Bird Street is a little more dense because it looks more like a Belmont neighborhood. So it's like a tenth of an acre, still sort of a appropriately dense thing for a small town or village. Um, but what I'm interested in, this is feedback that I would like to get from, from the site plan side. Um, if we keep those thirty-six units, which I think is a good size, I think that's a reasonable size for impact, um, small growth. If we distribute those thirty-six units across the full nine acres, which we're not currently doing, um, currently distributing over seventy percent of those nine acres, we'll actually get a density that is right on target with what is going on on Page and Harrison Street, which would be an average density of a third of an acre. Some homes are like a half acre, some are like a quarter, but on average, they'd be right on target with what's going on adjacent. So what I'd like to see in preparation for this work session is a mock-up of the, of the thirty-six units, which is what planning commission has put in front of us, but on a revised site plan that distributes those thirty-six properties over the whole site and not all concentrated, I guess, like around the rim. I bring that, and the last point I'll say about that is it connects to some of our discussions about Bird Park. Uh, one of the conditions that I think we were hung up on the most at our last work session was the creation of this bird park within this neighborhood. Um, one was a maintenance thing. Can the town maintain this park? We know we're having trouble maintaining trees in D C N A. So it sounds like maybe adding a park there is not a great idea at this time. Um, and the question about who has access to it, right? Is it going to be accessible by people just in the neighborhood? Is it going to be accessible with people in town and get it for fixed maintenance issue? So for my money, like if we, I would like to see the thirty-six units across the full nine acres. Um, it sort of eliminates, it's two problems. One, what do we do with this park that maybe we don't actually want there? And two, it actually puts that density right on target with what's going on adjacent. It matches, and actually will probably very closely match some of the mock-ups that are in the West Area Downtown Plan that were made by Seth McDowell, the former vice chair of the ARB. So I think that, that's something that I would like to see before our special work session for comparison.
Thank you. You just have a motion and second, but any further discussion? Do you want to hear anything else from the conversation?
I, I just, uh, did you have something you, I didn't know if I cut you off when Zach started talking. Do you have anything? Okay.
Well, actually, yeah, I just wanted to uh, to mention that we have a plan here. This is from several years ago when I was on the planning commission, which I believe uh you all put together. And it shows thirty-nine houses on the space that uh, that is currently in the proposal. And it also shows development for that entire plaza. So I would like to see what's going to happen with this is higher water. Um, and if this plan shows fifty-five houses across all, which seems kind of like a reasonable answer to me. Um, so it feels, so I'd like to see uh a little more thought put into what the whole of this is going to come. As opposed to just pe, chopping up the pieces. Um, it also, another nice thing about this is it saves the water power in there. I think it's kind of historical condition as well.
Okay, um, any further comments?
Um, I have no further staff report. I think we've mentioned the staff working work session. We do have our applicants here with us, so I invite them to answer any of the comments or uh.
Either that, or you can come to the special meeting that we have. The public's invited to, rather than tie you up all here, uh, all night here today. Would that be okay? If you just, uh, one of you or both of you come to this public, public session that the council is going to discuss everything? And then you can have, maybe you've heard what, what council wants, you've heard what, what the neighborhood wants. Uh, so come back with something.
No, that's good. I think, I think it's clear what uh you all want to do. I think that makes sense. You heard a lot of misinformation just a couple of days ago. And so that's fine to come back to that. We have to make sure we don't run out of schedule.
Yeah.
The first.
We'll, we'll get it all coordinated. It'll be after the first of the month, I imagine. Yeah. So with uh, no further, yes.
Quick question. But I think with the map, um, will we be able to see before that meeting all of the uh responses that, that people filled out with regards to what they wanted to say, when we had them itemize their, their wants.
The feedback from the workshop, yes, we've got that tabulated. Um, Mr. Warren did a good write-up on those um over the weekend. We sent that out right away. We also had a write-up from Mr. Sadler with the um kind of reactions and conclusions of his.
I missed it. I didn't see it.
I'll check back on that.
So it's been moved aside and a note for the discussion. I'd ask the clerk to call for the vote.
So, that's it?
Yes.
That's a vote?
Yes.
Name or risk code?
Uh, yes.
Uh, Meredith Hines?
Yes.
Jordan Munson? Yes. Eddie Tate?
Yeah.
Good. Okay, and uh, again, if, when we set the date for this, or before, you, before we know when the date is, feel free to call the town office at any time and say, put me on the list to be notified when this meeting is. And we'll keep a separate list and everybody that would like to be notified of the day and time of this special council meeting in February will be called. Okay? So now we get to our uh second uh. the public area on the Blenheim Road question. You're here to speak about Blenheim Road and are you, is there a sign up sheet for that?
I'll I'll run through the same sign up sheet. If you feel free not to speak, I'll move on to the next person. So we'll just start with Tim. Okay, Tim. See, Kopee Bills.
I just want to mention a couple of issues that uh well, the likes of both properties, but this one particularly uh I think it would be good to discuss at your meeting. Is this just as a a phase development or is this a long-term project? I mean, in other words, it would be good to know the big picture, like somebody mentioned, that it's what's going to go on with the rest of the property. Is it just this one? And and or at least make clear what could happen with the rest of the properties on both sides. Uh the other issue is uh which I'm not still not really clear, is there going to be private parks and and uh and trails or are these going to be public parks and trails and the maintenance of those kind of things? And the last thing I would want to mention is, and I think of both properties, is they they came up in the, you know, community meeting about the plan unit development. And I still, and everybody seems to like that idea, but that would give some control. Like what Zach said about the number of houses and and if you're going to have a park or you don't have to have a park or you can have affordable with this plan unit would really uh allow the town to make the decisions on on this, the look of the the place and and have so much more control. And then if leaving it to the developer or or dealing with all these issues that came up the other day. So planning and development might be something to look at before you make a decision on on this. That's what I think.
Okay, thank you, Bill.
Much of what was said about Bird could also be said about Blenheim. A little surprised because Ann Darby isn't one who mentioned that at the bird that there'd be significant increase in Bird Avenue and that there'd be problems with the pinch point and library. There also be a problem of uh emergency uh vehicles with uh no secondary. So I I know Zach was at the same uh meeting that she said all that and you're saying that there's no problem. So I think we should go back to the video on those. I think with Blenheim, it's the same thing. We have a concern. We've got a thirty-five mile an hour zone out front. This was presented to the planning board, downtown council, so you get to present it all over again. Uh when V dot was asked about it, the gentleman said, I don't know where that is. I just drove by. The other V dot gentleman who uh spoke on it spoke for about fifteen minutes about Route twenty and the dangers of Route twenty, but not about Blenheim. Again, when we get into it, something that came out of the meeting with Ann Darby, uh something I didn't know about and no one else seemed to know about it either was that the special use permit, when you uh approve a special use permit, it stays with property forever. That was kind of radical. Uh so that applies to both uh properties, whatever you do there just stays, whether it gets developed or not. And then the other thing that was pointed out too by uh Stotts uh at that meeting was at mobile homes. Single fam- single wides, double wides can be put up there. Uh approve something like that, forty-eight homes or whatever you're doing. Could be just sold to Clayton and you could have double wides up there. There isn't that much control over it. Uh the homeowners association is something I think you guys need to really kind of uh talk about. And you understand that you're bringing in two municipalities, not just one. If we're controlled.
Thank you, Matthew.
Is there anyone else here to think about?
We're just down the street from this location and uh I think, again, I bring up the fact that numerous, numerous people talk about infrastructure being a very big concern with regards to the Blenheim Heights development. That's James River Road, the intersection with Route twenty and James River Road. The increase between the developments and in this area in general, as the greater Scottsville area continues to grow. The traffic through that area can be kind of scary. If you haven't driven through that intersection recently, it can be really hard to see. Growing up in Blenheim, one of our are in that area, one of the big concerns has always been what will happen with all of that land. And when people talk about Prose, it isn't a fear. It's a knowledge of how small incremental developments can end up creating a larger patchwork of dense houses that was not initially planned for in the beginning, but ended up happening after the fact. And again, I'll go back to the idea that the biggest concern for most of the community is making sure that plans are put into place to protect the town, to protect the community, and to make sure that they are not caught off guard by numerous different issues, whether that's the infrastructure issues with regards to the water and sewage and planned improvements that are supposed to take place in other years, two years from now. Um whether that has to do with the roads, which I don't know if you've driven Blenheim recently, but it crumbles on the side. Um and the ditches are about two feet or more deep. So having additional people walking down that area is kind of scary. There's nowhere to go. And also take into account that the neighbors just across the street are also Admiral County citizens. So including their voices does mean something because they are literally going to look into this location every day that they step out of their houses. So I'm sorry, I'm not quite as uh well thought and well spoken as normal, but I appreciate um your time on this. This really means a lot to the community. Blenheim in particular is kind of a a thought pattern for a lot of people because the people who go to Blenheim and who move into that section of town never ever have to come downtown Scottsville. They don't have to come down to support the businesses. They can either take Blenheim Road all the way to Charlottesville or Route twenty. They can shop on their way home from Charlottesville and never have to come downtown at all. So take those things into consideration, too. You would be creating essentially a competing community north of town. That's just kind of.
Thank you.
All right, I just want to speak briefly because of Prose and I've got to, I've got to bring up these points. Prose is three point seven square miles that in nineteen eighty had a population of twenty-five hundred people. Scottsville, including the hundred and forty-seven acres in the Blenheim development that we're talking about, is one point five four square miles that has five hundred and twenty-four people on it. That had five sixty-six uh ten years ago and five fifty-five before that. So even if by some miracle, the population of this town tripled, it still wouldn't be close to the glory days of Prose when they only had twenty-five hundred people. So we keep, I really wish, I also don't want it to be Prose. I can't be clearer about it. And it can't, it won't. This won't happen the way you are afraid that it will. I just, I just want you guys to know that, like know it in your bones because it's true. So if you're gonna make comparisons to Prose, just don't, just stop. Think about this town, this place, and this moment in time because it is nothing like Prose. Prose is flat farmlands that were once uh fruit trees and lumber yards. This town, if you look at the top map to math, feel free to grab it, is, if you live here, you know, it is jagged as scarpones left and right. That doesn't mean it's impossible, but it is much more difficult to develop. And even if they developed every square mile, it would still not be close to the density that is going on in Prose. So please, please, please rest easy. We will never be Prose and certainly not as long as I live here.
Anyone else? Anyone on Zoom?
I have a Prose comparison I'd like to make, but I think Barry signed up first.
Hey, Barry.
Hey, good evening.
Hey, go right ahead.
Uh, thank you. Well, a couple of the comments, uh, I mean, I second a lot of what what Thomas and several other folks have said. Mainly that the the town has done a lot of good work over the years uh to prepare for these kinds of things with the planning commission, lots of public comments, uh commentary periods. We've, a lot of work has been done in advance. And what concerns me in in this situation is, well, for one, I think what makes Scottsville a a great community is that there's a mix of of large houses, medium-sized houses, smaller houses and and rental units so that we have a a vibrant mix of people. And I think, I think as a community, we want to support that. The concern that I have with these special use permits is we're not getting the whole picture. The landowner is, they're professionals at this. They they have, they have a plan. They know how this works. They're only showing us this small piece. Uh, they're only showing us a few of their cards and we're in a negotiation with them. And I think it's it's irresponsible and a disadvantage for us as a town to approve a deviation from uh for the special use permit, to approve a deviation from these carefully laid out plans we've built over years without knowing what the rest of the cards are that we're agreeing to. I think it's one thing to say, yes, let's have smaller, uh higher density developments within these uh two, two development areas. But that's very different from approving this and then coming back and finding out that that's what the whole development is going to be. I mean, I think, I think if we were seeing like a a well-thought-out plan for the whole development that was as well thought out as the plans that the planning commission and the town has put into our zoning ordinance and and the plans up to this point, that I think, I don't think that's too much to ask of the developer to put as much into it as as we have. Uh give us the whole picture and let us uh agree to this or not in good faith and we can, we can negotiate uh the points as needed. Um but I I would suggest strongly that the the council defer approving this until they get that much information, the whole picture on both. That's all.
Thank you, Barry. Mr. Onsworth, the younger.
Thank you very much. And thank you again for letting me borrow a a minute here for my first spiel. Uh I I have much less to say about the Blenheim Road other than I I would ask you to uh reject the proposal outright. There's no plan in place for what this plot could be. And I think if the town proves itself a workable partner on Bird Street, you should have no problem asking for a delay uh to plan uh for the vast potential of this last large developable lot in Scottsville. Uh we we know what we're losing in the potential for the the factory development down here at the end of Bird Street, a hundred and eighty thousand square feet and that where the last large employer in town was. Um it would seem to me that this is the lot that has the highest potential to become the type of small business or industrial park, retirement community, community college campus. You know, any number of things that could potentially replace that in terms of uh bringing jobs, opportunity and and new people to town. I, I hear the concerns and I appreciate Kelly's uh uh perspective and context there about, you know, us not ever becoming Prose. I think, I think some of the anxiety is in uh identifying um bad ideas in development that are scalable even to a small scale. And and one of those, I think, is the car-dependent suburb. Uh and and what I see looking at this is the potential for all of the traffic and parking impacts people are concerned about on Bird Street and downtown, not coming from downtown where people can walk around, but coming from development on the outskirts of town where we're asking people to get in their cars and drive. Uh Van Cleef Nature Area is not a pedestrian thoroughfare, nor is that, you know, its intended purpose. It's a nature reserve. It's an area to go out and see wildlife and we're going to see a lot less of that if we try treating it like a major, you know, well-lit pedestrian thoroughfare. Um so I completely agree with what Barry said, you know, this feels like letting the camel's nose under the tent to begin what could become a massive residential development. They would not only, yeah, as I said, create those kinds of uh impacts that that we're trying to avoid downtown, but seems like it would willfully ignore uh everything we've learned about mistakes of the last, you know, generation of urban planning. So, uh, yeah, again, I would just ask you to take your time, look at this and make a good decision for the future of Scottsville. And in this case, I think we can do a lot better than what's on the table here. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else on Zoom wish to speak?
Mr. Schumpert, but to speak there.
You're muted, Susan.
All right, um following up what John said about the Van Cleef Nature Center. On the last iteration of of the Blenheim Plan, uh somehow that trail just disappeared. And originally it was to have access on the road, which is totally unacceptable and very dangerous, as people have pointed out. There is the potential for providing through off-site parking uh and and continuing that trail to make the Van Cleef Nature Center not a thoroughfare, but certainly part of extending the walkable community. And the master plan for Van Cleef Nature Center was approved uh four years ago, and it clearly calls for extending it if possible, all the way up to the Blenheim site. And that's certainly part of, be part of a consideration for uh whatever comes out of that site. But I certainly agree with John that to do it piecemeal is uh going to be not in the community's best interest. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Anyone else on Zoom? Okay.
David, Justin Champ, engineering project. I just want to address a couple of points quickly. One, just about, I heard that the the developer hasn't been here, hasn't, you know, shown up to meetings. So I have worked with Dr. Hurt now for about twenty years. I know of one meeting he has gone to his entire career, my entire time, in that he hires folks to go do things and wants us to represent his interests. So that's, it's nothing about him not wanting to be in Scottsville. It's just, it's not how he operates. And we, maybe three or four years ago, brought forth an R three idea for the Blenheim property roughly in the next three, four years. And at the time, that was a much larger development. There are, the feedback we got was there was very little desire to even think about that. And so when you ask the questions like, well, what is this all going to look like? That's a good question. But Dr. Hurt's perspective is that there's been like no subdivision here since the nineteen sixty, something like that. He does not anticipate that he's going to sell these lots out in a year, then come back. Maybe it's a ten-year endeavor. Um so I think the folks who are worried about the future, which looks like it's a fair question. But in our minds, it's almost too far down. What will the housing needs Scottsville be in ten years after this first bid? We believe right now that some kind of workforce housing that people can live in, especially be closer to downtown, to walk downtown, shops, to use the parks. When I first, when I first arrived in these properties, we walked down around the tire factories and made, what, this is a great place to live. There are people out walking kids in their strollers and down playing baseball. It's great. So I think there'll be a lot of people who will benefit from that. Uh keep the water out for people and I think it's a great phrase for that. But as far as, you know, why we have proposed, you know, bigger plans, it's really because for an arm line, the foreseeable future is a smaller scale. Uh we're not trying to create five hundred units in ten years. I don't think that's practical or necessary. The town wanted to see what that looks like. I mean, we're certainly open to those sort of discussions. But again, that's the thing you might plan for. Then ten years later, finally, you know what? Housing, you know, typology we need has changed. Now we gotta review this plan. And that's why we have brought forward something more complete. Because we don't anticipate the growth is there to sort of consume that housing at a time that makes sense to plan and follow. So hope that helps with that question. Then special use permit versus the P. Then special use permit versus the PUD. We started looking at this property zones discussion of doing a PUD ordinance first. And I think, I don't know the history, I don't know the exact nature of why you all went with the special use permit route instead. The benefit against to you though is you get to write, you saw the conditions you have. You get to write those. The PUD, we should have to bring those forward. And actually, I think the special use permit gives you a little more direct ability to say, we're worried about this and impose a condition rather than us trying to have to kind of figure out what you're worried about and then make a plan that matches that. So I think the special use permit will work well for your purposes. Which sounds like we need a meeting to get through what some of those things need to be. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else in the audience who didn't get the chance to speak? Close public hearing and the, I won't say the whole speech again, but I'd like to defer the vote on this until February 22nd and discuss it through the same special meeting we're going to have the first part of February. Your motion to that effect?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make that motion.
Okay, is there a second? Motion by Vice Mayor Grisco and a seconded by Councilman Munson. Is there any further discussion on this?
Just a couple of points. I, I think, I'm glad you brought up SUP thing, SUP HUD distinction. It's important to make here. And so a couple of questions raised about how are we going to control housing types with the trails to be public? That's currently in the SUP. And so that's, that's currently part of the conditions that are already in here based on community feedback and what the planning commission gave us. So right now, trails are going to be public. Intentions to connect to the CNA. And again, with housing types, we already are empowered to make those decisions. Do we want all single family detached? We can say that. Do we want to mix duplexes, triplex? We can't. We just have to check off, yeah, that's in fact the one that we want in here. So I think in terms of control, I feel really good about this SUP because I've got a lot, I've got a lot of control over these specific things down here. So I just wanted to say that. And, you know, I'm, I'm comfortable, I, for this part of town. Cause I'm also interested in walkability. And I appreciate Susan mentioning that. How do we preserve that in this larger plant? But I also see that this, these 18 units being a start. And so I'm glad you mentioned that in terms of like the long-term plan, like what is the vision? Needs change. So then you have to revise whole plan. This seems like a workable thing to start. And in relation to density, again, I want, I would like to see a revised plan for this site that gets rid of the 30% green space. Cause that 30% green space isn't even doing anything in terms of parkland on this site. And again, if we get rid of that 30%, take the 18 that are recommended. That's the recommendation from planning commission. So not the full freight that was presented, but a reduced number, 18. And you take those 18 across the nine acres there, you've got half acre lots, which is the exact same size as the lots on the neighboring street, which therefore is an appropriate density neighborhood right next door. To go back to the concerns about traffic, GDOT did the same thing. They've got their calculus for figuring out traffic flow. I forget, if there's one more car a minute or something like that on that street, there might be two cars at the stop sign at the busiest time of the day. And in terms of improving the water down there, at the third meeting on Saturday, we heard that there won't be a conflict because the water authority contracts out that work. And so it's not like their guys are over here and then they shift over here. They can have multiple projects going at the same time. So in terms of the upgrades that need to happen in that part of town, we, we can do it. The water authority will be able to handle it.
One of the things, just to say, well, well said, Councilor Bullock. I, I would just like to add a comment to follow up on a couple of things that were said before. One is that often when people have dialogued about this, I think there's been a significant misrepresentation or misunderstanding, I'll call it, in terms of understanding what's happening. If you look across our Commonwealth, we go from one of the most growth counties in the country where they have something called South Riding, which put in thousands of houses to something we're familiar with in Crozet that people like to measure us with. Then when you go back on some data that was already mentioned tonight, where in a 10 year time period, Scottsville lost several dozen people and there's been no new documented housing stock added since 2009. And when I got my master's degree in public administration, one of the things they helped us to understand is that in any town and in any county and in any state, you've got to have growth, a yearly growth. And so the growth in Scottsville has been stunted not only for years, but for decades. And this stunted growth has been a disservice to our community. And it's been something that we really have not been forward thinking in terms of. And I've, I've often said to people, when we talk about this issue, we need to think about mostly the people that are not represented here. And that's younger people and even the little ones that, that are on the soccer field and the basketball courts and the baseball fields. The future is about them. It's not about us. It's not about what we say in these meetings. It's about what can we do to create a better future for them? And I often think a lot of this conversation has lost sight of that. People are worried about things today, which is legitimate. But we, I think have lost sight of it. The evidence is there. We haven't done anything which is extremely out of step with any normal sense of growth. Some of that also is based on the economics that fluctuates. There are times where economic realities make growth not possible and other times where they make it possible. And I, I think this is a time for us to move forward and I'm hopeful that we do. I do think the town community has given us a lot of good input. And I think as town councillors, we should do the best we can to incorporate those many thoughts that people have had and also not forget the silent voices out there and also the voices that are afraid to speak out. There's, this has not been a friendly debate that's happened out there. Some of those who've said what they've said have scared away a town councillor and I take great offense at that. And I want to remind each one of us as town councillors that, you know, as we make decisions, we do need to make tough decisions and we need to make them in the light of the future, not about the past, not about what we want. We need to think about what's best for the town of Scottsville. And at times, what's best for the town of Scottsville means we need to look past the, the politics of the day. So, so that being said, I think it's a wise idea for us, Mr. Mayor, to meet together, come up with adjustments that we need to come up with something that we can pass. And that is good for the town and it's good for the future.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other comments before we call for the vote? It's a little late for that. Mr. Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Meredith Heinz?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Lawless, would you explain item C on the agenda, please? If anyone doesn't, you know, feel free to give up and leave anytime you want to. You're welcome to stay to the end, but it's just a couple of housekeeping things left on the agenda. And we do appreciate you taking the time to come to this meeting and all the other meetings that you've been to. Okay, we'll go ahead with the agenda of this.
As I said, the planning commission reported out two much smaller and less controversial special use permits at their very, very fourth meeting. The one on transient lodgings, 360 East Main Street is currently two apartments and a castle. The applicant, Mr. Corey Bieber is the owner, wants to convert one of the apartments into forest lodgings. We're still replacing the inventory of rooms from the closure of Chester and High Meadows years ago. Councils approved several of these special use permits and not gotten back to that inventory of rooms. For that reason, planning commission thought it was reasonable to recommend approval. It means it's town councilful, it's impossible action by February 22nd.
Any questions from Adam?
No, my only, alright, so I guess the motion called public hearing. I guess my thought is if we're going to be returning to these specialties, special use permits on Bird and Blenheim in February, and we're having a special work session on them, does council feel like we'll be able to adequately discuss those special use permits in addition to these for action in February? Or should we move these to March? That's my question too.
Well, the one with the lumpkins, that's just saying, yeah, you can keep on doing what you've been doing.
Yeah.
Forty years.
There's one I'd hear that I didn't think would be here. Mr. Bullock needs to read the agenda. I see, these are less controversial.
And 360 East Main just means how much you're going to charge in the parking your driveway.
That's right, my driveway. $99 a day.
So is currently 60 rooms, are they currently apartments and being rented as apartments?
Yes, there are two upstairs apartments.
And are they currently built? Are there people living there?
One of them is at the end of its lease and the applicant has, he has a tenant in the other one. And that person is interested in serving as like a property manager for their Airbnb in exchange for a break on the rent. And rather than bring on a new tenant at this point, he's got a moment in time where it's vacant and he's interested in converting it. So he wouldn't be evading someone by figuring this.
That's nice. So are these time sensitive, I guess would be my other question.
The applicant is interested in a faster decision because of time to, you know, begin using the property before a season's coming.
Yeah.
And they've already lost some time over the holidays.
Yeah.
So they're vacant.
Okay. Well, never mind then. I'm comfortable.
I can. Yeah, when we, the two we did tonight, that's just going to be a vote. And if we have a good, good session where we discuss everything and everybody gets kind of on the same page or at least gets into your mind what you're going to do with it. All we have to do is call for a vote.
That's right.
And any more discussion, but it won't be a public hearing. We've had a public hearing. That's a done deal. Stay out of the court.
I'm concerned about the recent changes that we have made in apartments. We just got through rent there. And now we're losing it everywhere. So while I don't think that that's a good thing, I also don't like to tell people what to do with the property.
This is a good example of the way that special use permits are not precedent setting. Town council has approved several of these recently, all in, all in new down codes. But there comes a point where you feel like, okay, the, the market is shifting. And eventually the apartment inventory is more important.
Yeah.
And you start saying no to this.
Yeah.
And it doesn't matter that you've approved seven of them in the past. But you're allowed to say this is too far.
Yeah.
And that's a very, it's an easy example on one like this and holds true for the larger stuff as well.
To help us with that, because I, I've had this thought before, Councilor Lucy went off. The last special use permit for transient lodging we have, she mentioned what, she just raised the question, you know, if we could be approved three or four, at what point should we stop? And so I think it might be helpful to see a map of town. And if you can like label where the Airbnbs are, that would at least, I think, give us a sense of how, how many there are, where they are. And I think that would at least help me think, think that through a little bit.
We have a very business friendly process on this.
Yeah.
Special use permit and a business license, pay tax. It's easy. But sure, there comes a point where it's too much.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's helpful for staff.
Cool.
Okay, staff reports, item number seven. Oh, yes, I need to do that.
On each one? I, I call for a public hearing on special use permits for tourist lodging at 360 East Main Street and mixed use at 1075 Allen Street.
Second. I'll second. And any further discussion? Is this a roll call? Could have a, all in favor? Okay. Staff reports. Town clerk have a report tonight or is he still in the training process?
I'm still in the training process.
How's it going?
I'm going great actually.
Great report.
I would draw your attention to the financial report that's in your package. We did not have that ready at work session last week because that was, Mr. Holt, that was his first day on the job. But by, by Thursday, it was all put together. So you have the, the normal financial statement ready to go there. It is halfway through the year, so it's very easy to look through there and look for plus or minus 50%. And you can see how lines are performing at, we talked about some of that already, not a way of budget analysis. So seeing like meal tax ahead of schedule at 50%, transient occupancy tax ahead of 50%. That's good news for the, for the workforce. I did also want to speak to Mr. Holt's good point about snow work. I've heard from more residents around town, a lot of those same lines. And isn't there an ordinance about that?
Yes, that's what I wanted to know.
There is. It, it dates to 2010.
Okay.
And is very similar to what the city of Charlotte has.
Yeah.
If there is a sidewalk in front of property that you own, whether it's a business or a house, whether you live in it or live somewhere else, it is your responsibility to clear the snow from in front of that sidewalk within 24 hours after the snow stops falling.
Yeah.
And if you don't, I'm empowered to survey one night and then clear it for you and charge you for my costs. Mr. Lawless did a search through our pickles. We have never billed anyone for the costs of clearing this tunnel in front of the property. Thanks.
Can you repeat the ordinance just for semantics? Did you say the owner of a building, whether it's a residence or business?
Is responsible for having it done. Anyone could be the one.
So even if the business is a tenant and it's not the business's responsibility, it's the landlord's responsibility?
That's between them to sort out the duty, but it needs to be done. And it's the owners, the owners' fault.
Understood.
We have never fully enforced this, but we also haven't done much in the way of outreach. So with, with more winter weather coming, I'd kind of take the pulse of council. Do you, do you think this ordinance is absurd? Or, or do you, do you think it's reasonable and something we should start getting the word out along again?
Yeah, I think like this week we should get it out.
Yeah.
Yeah, let it know. Because it has piled, it's like six inches thick down East Main Street.
Yeah.
This is serious.
And, and I, I would feel really good about, okay, you know, put the word out. It's 6:00 PM and the snow is up falling. By 6:00 PM tomorrow, we need to get out and do your part. It's all put together. If you live out of state, get someone to come do it.
Yeah.
And we'll, and the town will clear in front of our buildings and our parks, but not in front of other buildings.
Yeah.
And after that day has gone by, we'll serve the warnings. And then if I need to hire more staff, you know, contract crews to get it done, we'll do it. We'll be able to recruit those costs and it won't hurt our budget.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Mr. Lawless?
Sir?
Did I see you as a kind soul out there helping out?
Oh, it's good exercise, but I missed my running that day.
Next time there's a P.
That's right.
Well, I, I do thank you for what you do. And I mean, I mean, I'm saying this for real. You go above and beyond many times and I thank you and I think we all thank you for what you do.
Anything else from the staff? Anything else from the council? I hear a motion to adjourn. And is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you all so much.